Great.
Good evening. It is the fourth of March, Tuesday, six thirty. This is the time and place for our committee meeting of the Northern Lebanon School Board of Directors. We are meeting as a committee of the whole this evening, and I do call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda this evening is presentations. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, we're gonna start. We had elementary last month, and it's secondary's turn to come and talk a little bit about some of the things they're working on.
Good evening. Just like they did with last month with the elementary to kind of give you some overview of some of the things that were done at that level. We're gonna hit some highlights of several of the things that we've been focusing on. You've been hearing about several of these items from Dr. Messinger's monthly reports. And so we decided to come here and just to give you the current status of where certain things are at.
Good evening, everyone. So I just have a brief overview. I'm here to talk to you about some assessments that we implemented. So there's two different ones that we're currently using. In the past, we've used CDTs, which is a diagnostic assessment. We have typically in the past administered them three years ago. This year, because of a new pilot through the state, it's called Firefly. This is more of a benchmark assessment. So this is where we're measuring student growth and where they're at amongst their grade level peers on their standards. The goal with the state is that as of next year, they're gonna use the data that they collected this year for all the schools who piloted the program to be a predictor for how students are gonna do on the PSSAs and also on the Keystone assessments. So for this year, we only piloted the Algebra One course. But, you know, we're in talks for how we're gonna implement it possibly for next year for all the testing grades. The next slide. But here, this is just a slide, I believe you have access to it, where it just kind of goes over the differences between the two. So, you know, with the CDTs and the Firefly, we can assess them at different times. Where the CDTs, that's where teachers can use that data to make immediate instructional decisions, you know, where they can fill in the gaps for students, to meet them where they're at, you know, in small groups. And that's been one of our focuses this year, the secondary, helping teachers work in those small group to meet their students' needs. And then that Firefly. So far, we've only administered it once this year. We're talking about having them do a second assessment then in March, once before they do their Keystone and PSSA's assessment. So that's where we're at for this year.
Let me just, let me expand upon that a little bit, because they saw what elementary is doing. We talked last month about diagnostics versus benchmarks, okay? Firefly will give us benchmarks in the testing grade levels that we have not really had in the past. They're designed by the state. They're gonna give us feedback along the way. The problem, and you might question, well, why aren't you gonna do it again? Well, the problem this year is that they're in a pilot stage. They're really not providing us a ton of data at this point because they're trying to norm it. So the data that we got back, while there was some information, it wasn't enough information to really, really help us. They're saying that that is coming next year. So next year, we'll be able to expand it beyond algebra. I'm glad we did it. I'm glad we got to see it. And I'm glad we got to understand how to use it from a technological standpoint. It's not that helpful for us this year, but it sets us up next year to be in the same position that elementary was this year when they showed you their data in that chart and kept track of students. The other piece of it, potentially, even though we use a benchmark at the elementary school, the benchmark is done by Ed Insight, which is our data warehouse. I am not convinced that those benchmarks are as closely aligned to the Pennsylvania assessments as these are. So if we're successful with this at the secondary level and we get the information we hope to get, we will probably replace the Ed Insight benchmarks at the elementary school with these Firefly assessments. Again, really important pieces for us from a data standpoint, so that, and I'm gonna tie it later on into curriculum, but so that we can understand what we need to do in order to help our kids be successful with these, so that, you know, they're meeting graduation requirements, et cetera, et cetera.
We are in the process, well, the teachers are, of writing a few new courses for next year. So here's just highlighted two of them. One of them to meet the needs with our algebra, we're developing a two-year algebra course. We're trying to be a little proactive instead of reactive to some of their scores and, you know, some of the struggles that students are experiencing with their algebra concepts. So we're developing a two-year Algebra One course where, you know, they're gonna dive deeper into some of those early-on concepts. So they've really developed that understanding of algebra early on so that they can be successful when it comes time to take that Keystone assessment. And then the second one is that financial literacy course. That's a requirement from the state. They, you know, they put out some some standards, you know, that's going to be a graduation requirement. So teachers are developing that course. And all students will be taking that course. I believe we're doing it eleventh grade? Is that, yeah, eleventh grade, we'll be administering that, where all students will have that course before graduating. So the next slide that I have to talk to you about are the nicotine dependence programs. So this year, over the summer, we talked about how we can meet the students' needs in an educational way, you know, so when students are being caught with vaping, we wanted to move beyond just providing some consequences. We wanted to provide them some education on the dangers and the effects of vaping and tobacco use. So we have two different programs that we're offering. The first one is called In Depth, and the second one is called The NOT, N-O-T. So the first one is a nicotine dependence program. It's not a cessation program. The NOT program is. So basically, what we did was, if a student's caught for the first time, we go over the vaping program with them, and our typical first offense in the past has been one to three days of in-school suspension and a citation. You know, let's face it, putting a student in school for one day isn't going to get them to stop vaping. So we felt that it was important to, you know, educate them on the dangers of this. So we have this year offered them this program where in lieu of that in-school, they can attend this course. It is four days after school, and we had them scheduled for the entire year upfront, so we had the preset schedule. And it's an outside agency who comes in, a trained professional who conducts these sessions. And it's one-hour session, so it's basically four hours. And they do need parent permission, so the student has to agree, and so do the parents or guardians. And if they do successfully complete that program, they, we were not issuing the citation also for that first offense. We had, you know, most of our students who were caught with vapes have gone through the program and have, you know, we've heard some really positive feedback with the program, that they enjoyed it. And, you know, they seem to get a lot out of it. You know, we're, you know, collecting the data on it this year to see, you know, what we can do next year. Because our ultimate goal is, you know, we want to reduce the vaping and teach the students on the dangers of it. The second offense, if students are caught a second time, they offer a second course, which is an additional four days, but they don't allow students to just take those four sessions. So they make them repeat the in-depth program, so that's four days. And then included in that would be the next four sessions for the cessation program. Again, those are after school, so it's a total of eight hours for that program. And if families agree to that and sign the permission slip and they successfully complete it, we do not issue that citation as well. And I think we've only had one student have to move on to that second program. So, you know, I think that's so far, you know, that's been a success. And again, that student, he felt that that was a positive influence on him. The next slide, this just kind of goes over the two different programs for you. It talks about, you know, how the sessions are broken down for you. We also provide, you know, a pamphlet for the parents when we have them sign up for the program. You know, trying to, you know, educate the parents as well on the dangers of it. You know, that way they know what to look out for and what they can do to help support their student as well at home.
I recognize we may not get truthful answers, but at the end of this year, it'd be interesting to go back to those kids and find out if they're still vaping or not, if anyone has stopped as a result of.
So the program themselves, they do a survey when they're completed, and they will be sharing the results with us at the end of the year. That is part of the program. They, you know, I reached out to them to see if they would share them with me now, and they said they typically like to wait till the end of the year, so I am curious. You know, that's, I think students will be honest. I mean, they typically are. You can go on their website, the American Lung Association, where they describe the two, and they have the statistics for, you know, the success in other districts, you know, across the state. And they seem promising. I mean, so we can only hope, but, I mean, their statistics are saying one in ten students are vaping right now. So, I mean, we have to do something because it's there, and we have to protect the kids and educate them on the dangers of it.
Okay, good evening. So my slide is about the Avitum Club. So let me actually first just start by saying this week is Social Worker Appreciation Week, and we have a really good social worker in Kara Rhodes. And so she has kind of spearheaded this club, the Avitum Club this year. You can see some of the background there. I'm not gonna read every word on the slide, but basically Avitum was a club that was started about twenty years ago when a student died from suicide at Kocalico. And the students and the teachers and the members of the community just kind of came together and created this club to try to help students feel more a part of the culture and the community at schools. So we started this year here at NL. I mean, you can see the intention, the idea is to, you know, have communities and schools kind of come together to share a kind of a culture of kindness and advocacy, and the word literally means, I have your back. I got your back. So we just, this, at NL this year, Ms. Rhodes has kind of spearheaded it and started it. We do have some students involved with the group this year, and they just did their first activity last Friday, actually, during lunches where they, and you'll get to see this on the next slide with the pictures, where they had these kind of paper hands. And you can see there, students got their right positive messages on them and kind of post them throughout the school, positive messages to each other. And so the idea of this club is just to work, have student-led, a student-led organization that's looking to try to create a culture of kindness amongst the students. And with the support of an advisor, Ms. Rhodes, and, you know, and with admin and the rest of the staff coming alongside. So it's a young club, just started this year. It's still growing. Ms. Rhodes told, put this together for us. She wasn't able to be here tonight, but she put this together for us and said they have tons of great ideas. They're just working through how to get those ideas off the ground. So that's where Avitum Club is right now.
And again, just some background on that. That came out of the bullying discussions that we've had. It was a student that brought it up, and then it has become a part of SLAM at this point, like an offshoot of SLAM at this point, which you've heard presentations from in the past. I know that they're trying to build membership. They do have some good ideas, and I know that eventually, is it next year, or they're talking about trying to trickle it down into the elementary school at some point. So hopefully, we'll see. If you can get them interested earlier too, that carries over into the middle school. But it's directly aimed at some of those problems that we've had in the past in an effort to try to get kids to be a part of the solution, so.
Last thing here that we have is, as you know, we have a renovation going on at the secondary, hard to miss. And I know that you get monthly updates, if not more, if you are on, if you're a parent in the district and you have a student in the secondary, you actually get weekly updates from me and my weekly parent communication. The gray areas that you see out there are the ones that have, that were done at the beginning of this school year. But then you can see the new high school gym, that's in the yellow, that's, will be finished up at the end of this summer. You can also see in the, I would say, the burgundy purple area, or the more burgundy. If you want to come out to the play, please come out. Coming up this week, they're still doing some little rehearsals with the elementary and the secondary. They did that today, and then they'll do that tomorrow to kind of get through some of the acts. But then throughout the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you'll have other opportunities, and along with that, you get to see the brand-new auditorium. If you are able to come out there, if not, like I said, you'll see some pictures in this slide and also that I put out there. It's great to see. It is very, it's just been very upgraded, along with the sound system, lights, everything. Then you also have the new auxiliary gym slash the mat room for the wrestling area. That gets actually used even during the day, which is great for the PE, especially during the winter time when you have limited spaces where you can go. They've taken over that area during the day, and then with the new weight room. And currently, in the purple area, you have the twenties, that's being worked on and should be done in the next, actually, few weeks. They're actually ahead of schedule compared to where they were doing, and we've been working side by side with our renovations crew, along with, Dr. Reese has been an excellent advocate in interchange with getting everything on and ahead of schedule, in my opinion. We've actually turned over some of the parts that are in that little pink area ahead of schedule so that they can get in there and keep on going, because we have a large area to do this summer. I'm confident that they will do it. We are probably one of the very few, if not the only district, that's either on or ahead of schedule with renovations and work. Some of my colleagues that I talked to that have either gone through it or are currently going through it, they're months behind or even further. So the ECI and all the subcontractors have been working with us, and we've been working with them, and I think it's that joint work that's allowed us to keep on pace with those things. And the other, 200th hallway was turned over a while ago, but again, we're at a good spot where you can see, I would say, a little over half of the building will be done by the end of this summer kind of thing, which is a great thing to see in that aspect. And then, like I said, if you would have, probably would have seen several of the photos that I basically just took them off of my parent communications, several of them. You have the auditorium. Again, those pictures do not do it justice. Please come out to the play, see what it looks like. It is awesome to see that venue now and with the updated electronics and things of that nature. You have the new high school gym, the entrance and the inside. It is, the first time I walked into the high school gym, it was daunting the size of it. So it's gonna be an intimidation factor for those visiting teams that come there. It is a nice, great area that's gonna be used by our athletes and those that are in the gyms kind of thing. New weight room, got a lot of new equipment in there, doing a lot of great things with that aspect, and it's getting used early morning all the way and through the evenings by students and even faculty in there at that kind of thing, so. And then we have our new Déjà Brou. It used to And then we have our new deja brew. Um, it used to be where we had coffee and snacks. That is now down closer to where the current cafeteria is located. And we're in the talks of getting that, open it up to, for the, the high school students this year. Um, working through the process with that. Uh, they did a, a soft open with the, the staff for a little coffee opportunity about a week ago. And now we're going to open it up to the high schoolers in the next few weeks here. And then finally, obviously the current locker rooms, they're, they're nice. Um, I, I, I envy those kind of thing. I wish I had that kind of a nice locker room when I was a student. Uh, so, uh, I want to say thank to everyone around these tables. Thank you for your support and working through these things. Uh, it couldn't be done without you and obviously the support of our, our community, uh, and everybody involved. So I want to thank you, everybody for that. Our presentation, unless Dr. Messinger has anything else to add?
I don't. Anybody?
I have a quick question. So you said the renovations are going to be mostly done by the beginning of next year. What needs to be done next school year? So.
It'll be a go back to that one. Um, what the parts that are, yeah, thank you. Uh, the parts that will be done this summer will be the, the media center of the library. And then a lot of the science, uh, that'll be that middle white ring, uh, that we have right there. So we've got the media center and the science areas. Um, the tech ed, which is that kind of where that U shape and all that was already, was the most recent part of the building. So that's not getting a lot of work done, but that will be done towards the end. Uh, what will be done at the beginning of, of the school year will be the, um, TENS hallway, which is in that front area, which is being circled by the, the mouse right there. Um, we will be done. Um, I anticipated again, barring anything, but we're on our head of schedule. Uh, actually this time next year, end of February of 2026. So, uh, we're in a good pace and a good spot to do that. Uh, there will be a lot of work that takes place this summer, but, uh, they've always come through and, and gotten done on time. So I'm anticipating hopefully the same as well.
Other questions?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ebert. Uh, I have a few questions, but anyone else have questions? I, it's not very often we get all three of you to get to talk to you. So anyone else have questions? I don't want to step on anyone. Um, so with the, with the Firefly assessment, so this is PDE-driven. What, what's their goal? Is it to have all schools in Pennsylvania operating on the same benchmark approach?
I don't know honestly what their vision is. I think it's to provide that resource that has not been existing, that's truly tied to the keystones. So that's going to be a great resource. If you have the same company that's setting up the assessment, that's also offer, also offering that sort of resource to give them feedback to prepare for it. That's the best resource that you can have versus another company that's trying to make it close to. CDTs give us some good ideas, but it's not a hundred percent tied to it. So, and it's also great because it's on the same platform. So it's, they're going to see in the same format. It's not like a different format that they're going to see. So they get that, that novelty aspect of it and they know how the questions are set up, the layout, those kinds of things. In addition to, like I said, it is truly tied to the same core concepts and the, the assessment anchors that we are going to see with that. Is it going to be tested on for the keystones itself?
In, in the olden days when I taught, um, there was something similar called foresight that looked very, very much like a PSSA test. But that was under the old standards. When they changed the new standards, I don't believe there's been something released that is this closely aligned. Ever. Um, they're not forcing anyone to do it. But in terms of where we are as a district and the data standpoint and getting a feel for where our kids are throughout the year, uh, it's a great resource, obviously.
So when do we think that we'll, we'll have a fully workable program to use? I mean, if it looks like we don't have it next year, we won't have data that's, that's usable. What's the projection as to when this will be a, a meaningful benefit to us?
I would say next year.
It would be next year. Okay.
It's this year. They don't have the data.
Okay. But next year, we, we expect that it'll be.
We have a little bit, but there's, there's no item analysis. There's no projection. It's just a flat score, basically.
Fantastic. Great. Thanks. Um, for the Algebra One course, do we have an expectation of how many students we think will be enrolled in that? In terms of the overall Algebra One population?
I would probably say, I, my guess would be about 75% may go that direction. Um, it all depends on where your area of focus is. If you're going to become, in my case, I'm, I'm a math teacher. Uh, you're going to go straight onto the, the year one kind of option. Um, it just depends on the fields that they want to go into. We want them to be prepared the best for this. Um, I've seen, I've done some research on this. Um, and it's more and more schools have gone this direction. And it's just one of those things that, uh, we see that, and I'd rather be focused on the enrichment aspect and going through that direction than the remediation after they've taken a test and then have to take a course. I want to do it upfront, get the most kids through it the first time, and then also make sure that they have a better understanding. This will allow you to go, they talk about having, uh, ours, like how deep you go, having it two years to go in that content and be able to do a lot more in-depth understanding of the concepts. Because even students typically at, at a ninth grade level, some of them are, they can understand the abstract. Others are still in the concrete and that allows the more concrete examples for them to understand those concepts and be better prepared for like Houston.
Follow up quick, and then this may not be fair because you, you may not have thought about it. But i- if a student is in, thinking about our, our core vision and mission, if a student is in that second year and the spark comes on and suddenly math is their thing, do we have a way that we can then move them into more intensive maths so that they're not behind their peers?
They, we do have options where they can sometimes take two, two maths in a given year. So if they want to go that direction, there's a, there are a variety of different options that we can provide depending on the, on the given situation. Uh, our counselors do a great job by providing those options and then we ourselves, uh, as time goes along, we may envision different paths and things of that nature as well. Uh, but we didn't want to wait on this because we've been talking about it for a little while and we wanted to put it into, into action.
Dual enrollment comes to mind right away. Because you could take the extra class, get the college credits, get the AP part of it.
Well, I think that's great. Um, okay, two more questions. Sorry. Um, the Avitum Club, how did I say that right? I should know Latin pretty well. Um, there was a luncheon. What was the participation attendance? Pretty good? Oh, oh, okay. Oh. Great. Okay. Good. Because it was everybody. Okay. Okay. And then last question, and this was not on the presentation and I, I don't mean to ambush you, but, um, the board's been interested for a, a couple of years about cellphone use and, and the impact that it's having in the secondary school. Uh, any, any sense for how that's going this year, the cell phones? And I, and I guess, um, you know, as we think about the issues, do you have a a guess or projection as to what percentage of discipline issues in the secondary school this year are cellphone related?
I can at least give an overall, and it's great that they're here because they're the ones that deal with it when it comes to those kinds of situations. Um, it's nothing compared to, um, a few years ago. I'm sure you guys all still remember the TikTok challenges. Uh, that was not a fun period of time for any school district. Uh, and they've, every, a lot of people tried a different approaches and we want the approach of trying to minimize it within a, obviously not in the classrooms. And then also teach them how to use technology kind of thing. So that's our approach versus zero tolerance, yank out at that initial point. Um, a lot of feedback I got from the students is they, they felt a lot better because they weren't always on. And, and that, that feeling of I have, I hear a ding and I just got to see what that is. And then the social emotion that goes with it, because if it was something that wasn't maybe negative that was out there kind of thing. So those kinds of things that go along with it. It had gotten, it gets better. I mean, just like in waves, you'll have different things that come up. I, it was better in the beginning of the year. We are starting to see a little bit of an uptick along that lines. I had asked them, I didn't ask them about specific in percentage over how much discipline they did it. But I asked them, well, let's compare the middle school versus high school because middle school, they're not allowed to have it at all. Um, beginning to the end of the day, uh, if a parent ever needs to get a hold of their child, again, just like we did when we were students, you call into the office, we'll deliver the message. If it's not an emergency, if it's a true emergency, we'll call your student down to the office and find a separate room so that you can have a conversation, which is a rare case, but, um, we did it like we used to do when, when we were students. So, and then compared to the high school, again, not supposed to be in a classroom. And then we would allow them to have it out in the hallways or during lunches. Uh, I had asked them about what percentages of the discipline do you deal with between middle school and high school? They say approximately probably 10% only from the middle school. And then obviously the 90% would be from the high school side of things. Obviously, when you have easy accessibility to it, when it goes ding, uh, they can ask, you can ask them. We were talking about a few things at the end of the day and every time a ding, I, I would look over and it, it's hard not to see, is this an emergency? Is this something I need to, is my, my kids at home or whatever? Uh, those kinds of things. You want to know what's going on. Um, but I also joke, you can take my phone away from me and I'd be a happy person because then you're away from all those distractions and you focus truly on what you, you need to do. So in terms of that numbers, I could tell you again, it's when it's not available, it's minischool, uh, I don't know, approximate numbers out of all the discipline you deal with?
Okay. Okay. So, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Good. Right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Really appreciate it. And, and even as you were talking, I'm getting texts on my phone and my head is going. So thank you. None of us are immune. Thank you. Very pre, very much appreciated. Thanks for the report. Yep. Any other follow-up questions that before we move on? Okay. Uh, there was no public comment this evening, so, oh, sorry.
I actually, believe it or not, have a few things we didn't touch on that I wanted to kind of give an update on. I'm sorry, Kirk. Were you able to track that down? Okay.
Sorry. I apologize.
That, that's okay. That's okay. Uh, okay. So go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. All right. So despite the construction and, you know, some of the things we've talked about already, but I just wanted to highlight, uh, some things that we have done this year, um, and I'll, I'll call them accomplishments. Um, remember we had two main areas of focus. We have mental health side of things. Um, and then we also have some of the academic side of things. You know, and yeah, we've done some, we've done some training. Like one of the things we didn't talk about tonight was we've done, uh, six hours now, I think, of the McGrath training with six more to go. And then in the summer, we'll have the teachers go through that and ultimately it trickles down to the kids. I, I find it to be cumbersome, but yet you talk about a system where things don't slip through the cracks. This is, this accomplishes some of that. Um, we didn't talk about that necessarily, but we have done some things to try to help students, um, not just with mental health, but also be able to pursue their passions, which obviously they're coming to school, doing things they want to be doing. You know, rather than taking classes that they're not interested in, that, that puts them in a better place. So, uh, one of the things we did was we adjusted the calendar a little bit. Uh, there's more room for, um, professional development. We have, despite the fact that we haven't touched McGrath, we have done mental health, uh, training for teachers, including modeling. We also did the student connection.
We're all doing it.
Uh, and those extra days, uh, for in-service have, have allowed us to do some of those things that we haven't been able to do. Uh, in addition to that, there's some built-in breaks throughout the year, just as you're kind of getting tired, like March 3rd yesterday. You know, the students get a three-day weekend kind of thing, uh, to help refresh them. And that's been there, but they're, they're built throughout the year a little more than what we have done in the past. Um, more freedom with class choice. This year we removed, as they did their selections, those two, if you remember, we removed those two core electives. Uh, they can be replaced with any electives they want now. Um, we also put in a virtual PE class, which if they're looking for another elective, maybe they want to be in chorus and they haven't been able to make that work in their schedule, they could do a virtual PE class instead, um, and of a regular PE class, which frees up potentially a period in their schedule. Um, and then one of the things we've spent a lot of time on, and we haven't figured it out yet, but we are exploring how the course selections for kids are prioritized in Power School. So that when they're signing up for courses, they're getting more of the ones that they want, the more of those electives that they want. Um, obviously in the end, we have to make sure they're getting their graduation requirements. But, um, we're trying to, right now the computer is scheduling them and we believe behind the scenes that it, the way the program works, it's preventing them sometimes from getting exactly what they want. Now, our guidance counselors are great, and if you go to them and sit down with them, they'll reshuffle things for you, but not everybody does that or even knows about it. Um, and I'd rather have the computer do a little more of that work. So we're in the process of, of seeing if we can make that work.
It's not an AI issue.
Oh, boy. We talked about Avitum. I talked about McGrath. Uh, I'm going to show you in a minute a new curricular document that I've hinted at, but I'm going to show you an example. We've talked about data collection. We've talked about Firefly. Uh, one of the comments that was made last year was about an elementary newsletter that has begun and that has been consistent. I believe it's every other week, uh, that they do that. It is a little more fluffy than yours, Dr. Ebert. There's a little more rainbows and that kind of thing, but, uh, that has started. We've, we've tried to do more reporting at board meetings by bringing people in. Throughout the course of the year, you've heard from, from Lauren on things. You've heard from elementary, you've heard from secondary and so on and so forth. We've tried, we've done the dependence program, which we talked about with the nicotine and we started the two-year algebra. So we're, a, a lot of those things that fall in line with the two goals, uh, we're working on. But behind the scenes, a couple of times I've said in my updates, you know, there was no, no crises this, this week. And we got to work on some things. So I'm going to give you an example of some of the things behind the scenes. And aren't that really interesting for me to put in an email on a weekly basis, but kind of give you a feel for where we're headed? So if you would go to the next slide. Okay. This is an example of the curriculum revision. And I'm gonna, uh, at the very top, I have an example of one, and they're not all like this. But at the very top, I have an example of one that, um, was written. Actually, go ahead and shrink it a little bit, Tyler, and get, get the whole thing on it. I know it's hard to read, but we're all pretty close to it. On one of the TVs anyway. So in one of the, I, I looked, now I need to top there, buddy. There you go. Uh, an example of one that I pulled directly from a curriculum document right now. Students will take a class survey and create a graph based on the results. Okay? So I look at that and I think as a teacher, what, what the heck does that mean? Is that, what, what graph comes to mind director more for you?
Pi.
A pi graph. Okay. And somebody else over here might think of a bar graph or a, or a line plot, you know? So, um, it, there's just not enough detail. So if you look at, at the curriculum document and what we're recommending, what you're going to have is you're going to have three comps. You're going to have, first of all, you're going to have the concepts. And this, I'll show you an example of the whole document and how it fits together, but the concept. So this, the concept here, as in the example, is place value, understanding, uh, and properties of operations to perform multi-digit arithmetic. Okay? So that's the big thing, but that's not really good enough to design a lesson plan off of. So if you go to the concept, the things that I've been talking about in terms of John Elmroad and, and we'll talk about, what do you want your students to learn and how will you know if they've learned it? Okay. So what do we want our students to learn? Those are called learning intentions. Students are learning to use operations to solve problems. Okay, great. Still not enough detail. How do we know if kids can do that? Here's the magic, success criteria. Okay? Sometimes the state gives us some of this. It's called eligible content. Sometimes they don't. So in order to demonstrate that they are learning how to use operations to solve problems, they need to be able to do the following four things. Number one, they need to add and subtract multi-digit whole numbers. The sums are limited and subtracts up to and including 1 million. Okay? So you're not going to see anything over that. And you know that. This happens to be a fourth grade example. Number two, B, multiply a whole number of up to four digits by a one-digit whole number. That is very specific and multiply two, two-digit numbers. So guess what? I don't have to teach them, not that it's not valuable and not that it won't occur in the next grade, but I don't have to teach them how to multiply two digits by three digits. Or that might be enrichment for the kids that get it right away. But I do need to be able to make sure that they can do those things. Divide up to a four-digit dividend by a one-digit divisor. Oh, great. Because my kids in fifth grade could never do the two-digit divisors, but they could do the one-digit divisor. So great. I know I need to do that. And it even tells you how the answers are written and the number and letter D estimate the answer to addition, subtraction, multiplication problems using whole numbers. And it explains through six digit. It's very specific. And if my students can do those four things, then they have, they are demonstrating that they are learning how to, how to use operations that are equivalent to what the expectations they are learning how to use operations that are equivalent to what the expectations are in a grade four level, okay? I can write a lesson plan for those very specific things. And I believe that our curriculum, a lot of times, is very broad, because that's what we were taught to do. And so, when you look at a standard, because it would have stopped probably in some cases at, well, you have the example up there, or it would have stopped at using operations to solve problems. We have better information. We need to plug it into our curricular document, because our curricular document will then be the tie between what our teachers are looking at and their actual lesson plan, okay? To me, that's at least four separate lessons. It might even be, those lessons might be a couple of days even, but it's at least four separate lessons, okay? So, that's where we're headed. If you go to the next slide, okay, I'm going to come back to the curriculum, actually pull up the curriculum document while I'm on it, and then I'll go back to the roadmap.
The board did meet in executive session. Thank you, Vice President Williams. We did meet in executive session immediately prior to this meeting in order to discuss a matter of student discipline. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, we just muted for a quick recess while Dr. Messinger.
Yeah, I think the other two are fine, sorry.
Granted authorization.
Lesson learned. The, okay, go, Tyler, go through that page, that's just the title page, and then the approvals, that's all the same as it has been. All right, now get right there where it says course description, scroll up to the course description, okay? So, the document now, the course description's not new. They'll put a course description in, just like they have in the past. Though what's a little bit new is talking about what standards are being used to develop the curriculum, because sometimes the standards are Pennsylvania, and sometimes the standards are national, and sometimes the standards are actually a breakdown of Pennsylvania through the, what they call their assessment anchors into eligible content, if it's a testing subject. So, where they got that information for the curriculum will be listed there. Something that has been a piece of it, but has been a separate piece of it, is a scope and sequence. Now, this is where you see your unit and chapter, but these concepts, those concepts would match what I showed in the first column of the curriculum document, pacing, and then the assessments that go along with it, okay? And then finally, the resources. Now, the resources used to be listed, if you keep going down, they used to be listed in each, with each section, but then we would list the textbook over and over and over and over again, which isn't necessary. So, instead, we're going to list the resources there, and if it's specific to a unit and/or concept, we'll actually put it in that, in one place, so that we don't have to repeat, oh, yeah, we're using the textbook in this unit, and this unit, and this unit, and this unit. So, that's kind of the overview at the beginning, and then if you scroll down further, okay, there's another example. This is a different example, this is an algebra example, I believe, functions. Students are learning, in this case, in this particular unit, there are two things, to analyze and use patterns or relations, and two, to interpret and or use linear functions. Anybody remember how to do linear functions? Pete, no, you can't help. But, it does give you some very specific things there. For instance, identify letter C under there. Students can identify the domain or range of a relation, maybe presented as an ordered pair, kind of vaguely sounds familiar to me, a graph and/or a table. Create, so there's more detail there in understanding what the kids need to be able to do. So, that's a secondary example. Now, Tyler, if you go back to, if you go back to that and click on roadmap. Okay, so how does all this fit together? All right, so, number one, and we have, the beauty of this, is that we have a curriculum cycle that goes through every five years. So, we are not going to ask every single teacher to revise every single curriculum all at one shot. First of all, you guys would go insane trying to read it all and approve it, and we would go insane trying to get through all of that. But we are going to do is use our curriculum cycle and start plugging things in at the appropriate thing. But I was asked, it was actually a conversation with Kirk one morning, and I was rattling around, he was asking me about some of the things that I had been talking about, and, you know, I rattled, well, this is tied to this, and this is tied to this, and this is tied to this, and he said, well, did you ever write that down? And I said, actually, no. So, I wrote it down. So, here we are. So, number one, you know, these bullet points, and this is cyclical. Number one, we got to identify this eligible content. What do we want students to learn? And how will we know if they learn it? And I explained there where that comes from. Number two, which is something we've talked about a lot, we have to create assessments that are aligned to it. I have a very beloved teacher that my kids had when he was here, who, I don't know one soul that went through his class that didn't care deeply about him, that didn't like him. He was one of those teachers on that teacher appreciation night for sports that always got selected. And the problem is, my daughter would come home, now my daughter's pretty with it when it comes to schoolwork. I couldn't ask Riley this, but I can ask my daughter this. She would come home and she'd say, Dad, we just spent three weeks talking about this, 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 and this, and then I took a 75-question test and nothing was on the, nothing on the test matched what we talked about, and I got a B. God forbid she gets a B, but I got 20 points of extra credit, so it's okay, you know? Now, it took, so, the point is, that particular teacher, who is engaging, who didn't have discipline problems, who was beloved, would get caught up in telling stories, and they were related to the topic, but they weren't necessarily the things that they were supposed to be mastering in that particular class, okay? So, the assessment should match what you're teaching for the past three weeks, okay? And then ultimately, if you're in a testing subject, it should match what they're going to have to answer at the end. So, determine or create, determine assessments if they're already there, create them if they're not, for teachers. And we've done some of that work at the secondary level with common assessments, but we have more work to do. Compile data, okay? Well, you saw at the elementary level, we are compiling data. So, for reading and math, we're going to use a composite score to help us understand their overall student level. We're going to use benchmarks, we're going to use diagnostics, okay? All of those things that we talked about. So, if you keep going down, so what are we going to do with that? Well, there's really two types of data meetings. There's a grade-level meeting. The grade-level meeting looks at everything as a whole. We're teaching the same thing, or maybe I have three algebra teachers, we're all teaching the same content. Here's how my kids are doing, how your kids are doing, how your kids are doing. Guess what? They're all weak in a particular area. Okay, so, now, is that a curriculum problem? Do we not have it spelled out in the curriculum? Is that something that we're not taking, there's not enough rigor? Is there something there that we're, are resources missing? Okay, those are questions that we would talk about. Or, one teacher might have tremendous success and the other two might be struggling. Okay, how are you teaching this? And learning from each other in terms of lesson planning and instruction on those specific topics. The second one is individual meetings. Those individual meetings are utilized to determine your small groups, they're utilized to determine which kids are doing really well, which kids are struggling, what are you, where do you need to target, do they need intervention, which kids go to reading specialists in elementary school, you know, at the end of the secondary classes, which kids do I need to pull to give some extra time? So, you have two types of data level, or data meetings that go along with the data that we're accumulating. If you keep going down, those kind of data becomes a little bit of a universal screener to help us then identify teachers that might need some support. Some of our younger teachers, maybe, that we have coming in, maybe they don't understand this process, maybe they've missed some of the in-service and training. So, you can look at that, that helps them understand where to target their support. It also helps us understand where our in-service needs are. So, if we are struggling in a particular area, okay, that's something we need to either offer during our in-service days during the year, or during the summer, so it ties into that. It also ties into what a teacher might choose. So, if a teacher's having a struggle in one particular area, then we can point them to a resource, so that over the summer, when they do their trade day, that is targeted toward that area, rather than just taking something because it's there, give them something that is focused on their specific. So, it's just like we're meeting individual needs of students, we're now meeting individual needs of teachers. Finally, I put some things there that I think are critical for us to potentially, you know, to achieve our potential academically. Number one, curriculum that effectively identifies what we want students to learn, I've talked about that. The ability to lesson plan creatively and effectively. Once you understand what they're supposed to learn, be creative with it. I get a little bit frustrated by the utilization of resources without, you got, I talked to a teacher who had these great ideas, and I said, well, have you done them? Well, no, because I'm following the book. No, I don't need, I need to follow the curriculum. I need you to understand what they, you want them to learn, but if you got a great idea, utilize the great idea. You don't need to follow the book. You know, so we're trying to work through that, some of that. Assessments that are aligned to what students need to learn, and the data that goes along with it. And then, research-based programs that address fundamental skills, I put systematically and thoroughly, they need to be used the way they're written, and those are to provide the intervention and extra support when kids need it. So, I shared this with leadership, we had a lot of discussion about it. I think for probably the first time, and maybe since I've been here, that we've been able to work through the entire process, to look at the entire process, and it kind of came about from just this discussion about the revision of curriculum, and then how that whole thing can tie together. So, I tried to talk quickly, I'm out of breath, but that gives you an idea of, when I say, hey, we've been working on curriculum and things like that, okay, this gives you a little bit of idea of what we're doing behind the scenes, okay? And then finally, to tie it all in, started looking toward goals. I mean, I don't think it's any secret that, you know, our, probably our two focus areas for probably the next couple of years are going to be the same too, but we're looking at, when you look at goals, you know, what are some specifics? District-wide, I talk about continuing with McGrath, a warning system for students, including elementary, and defined steps to intervene. We're very interested in our data warehouse and the capabilities of potentially providing us global data on students and who to be looking out for that incorporates attendance and incorporates disciplinary actions and incorporates grades, and being able to use that as to help us identify kids that need more support. And then, and then look at, you know, how will we know, using some of the same Almrood language, how will we know if we're successful? Well, we have the teachers trained, and admin is utilizing the forms that we've just been, we're getting training on. The data warehouse is set up, and then we're getting student participation and grows and expands to elementary, that's in Avidem. So, and then I, what I did was I challenged secondary and elementary to talk about this. They're going to be having discussions at the March in-service, we're going to use the March in-service as a springboard to get ready for the summer training and then next year. And that's one of the reasons why we built those days in. And that's not something we've done in the past. We've always talked about it when they come back in August. Well, this time, we're going to talk about it ahead of time. This is why we had talked about moving up any goals that the board might have too. So, you know, that's going to be, all of these things are going to be a huge, long as focus in our March in-service. Okay, I'm done. Any questions for me? Anyone want me to change their settings on a Google Doc?
Great, that's very thorough, and appreciate it. That's exactly what we were looking for last year, and I think that that's conducive to better goal setting, so thank you. Very good. I've mentioned twice, I'll mention again, there is no public comment for this evening. So, next order of business for tonight is for us to establish our agenda for next week. So, we'll go into the item and we'll figure out what's going to be on the consent calendar and what will be in discussion, okay? Back over to you.
Okay, first three items are just the minutes, the activity account, and cash disbursements, we'll have all that information in there. 5.4 is a student agreement. Any questions on anything in five?
Okay, hearing no questions, we'll have all of those on the consent agenda. We'll move to six.
Okay, 6.1 is our annual IU13 IDEA funds, it's a pass-through. For us, it goes on every year for your approval. 6.2, which I actually do think we should move to discussion, the solicitor will be here to just, to talk about this like we have every other time, that's the resolution for the bond that we've talked about the last few meetings. So, I would recommend that go to discussion.
Okay, any questions on either of those? We will move 6.2 to discussion, but any questions regarding 6.1? Okay, hearing none, then we will have 6.1 on the consent and 6.2 on discussion for next week.
7.1 is the annual trip to the Holocaust field trip, and then also, we have environmental science field trip, when they go to Delaware and see a bunch of horseshoe craps, amongst other things.
Okay, questions, discussion? Okay, we'll keep that on consent, then.
8.1 is the comp plan that has been there since January, that, you know, we were forced to, if you remember, we were forced to do this a little bit early. The main focus of that really is the rewriting of curriculum, and then using assessments and the data, basically right out of the roadmap that I just talked about, and then along with that, our professional development plan that gets approved at the same time. The focus of that is surrounding those topics, as well as some of the topics that we have to do for the state and things like that. You list those topics so that we can then offer Act 48 Hours to the staff as they take their training on those things.
Okay, questions from the board?
Absolutely.
So, we have enough time? I didn't get a chance to really read the whole background.
Yep, absolutely, no problem.
Okay, so, we will, we will move 8.1 to discussion. Thank you, Director Williams. All right, human relations.
Our probably one of the things, we have a long-term substitute for the high school for a medical leave. We have a mentor for that long-term substitute for the remainder of the school year. We have an instructional aid retirement effective June 6th, and then a para-professional aid effective June 10th. And then we have some additions as every due, every month for our substitution, or sorry, substitute lists for March.
Okay, any- Okay, any questions on those human relations items? Okay, we'll leave those on consent, then.
And then just some informational items under 10. We have, Paula Gumber will provide, be providing five hours a week of student instruction in the home, and then some dates for you there on upcoming things.
Okay. Any discussion on those items? Obviously, it's information, so. If you have something.
Curious as to what kind of instruction's going to be taking place at the home. Can you just?
Well, I don't want to get into it too much as an individual student need, but it, it, typically, we set that up when a student has a need to be.
Okay, so it's like a two.
They're providing, and, I mean, it, look, it's not the same as being here every day, but it's to help supplement the instruction that they may be missing for not being.
All right, thank you. Good question. Okay, I've got tickets for the musical on Thursday. Anyone else going? Thursday?
It is Sunday. Yeah, but it's, it's earlier on Sunday, right? What, 1 o'clock?
Yeah, you do have some wrestling this week. Yeah. Okay, great. Anything else to bring to the board this evening? Okay, then, with consent, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.